My charger.
Uh-oh. This is my seat. That's me. Did you sit in my seat?
Huh?
My gosh, you sat in my seat. Lot of announcements tonight, a lot of proclamations. Oh, hello. My microphone is on. I have a blurb. Anyway, President Obama called again last week.
Nothing like family. It's a great thing.
That's Fred Lamari. But President Obama didn't want to talk about Fred Lamari. He keeps wanting to go on. He just wants to... Keeps wanting to, like, do a joint vacation. Me and Laura and Michelle and Brock. And I'm like, guys, you're great, but it's not working.
Good evening. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Durham City Council to order at 7:00 on November the 19th, 2018. I wanna, certainly wanna welcome everyone here tonight. We're very, very glad to have you with us. And first, I hope you'll join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. And now I ask Councilmember Reese to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are joined by Boy Scout Troop 424, Charter by Immaculate Conception Catholic Parish. They're gonna come up and help us with the pledge. They're led today by Senior Assistant City Attorney Fred Lamar. In uniform.
I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
424.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Boy Scouts. Good job. And thank you, Boy Scout Leader Fred Lamar. We like seeing you in this different role. Welcome. And now I will ask our city clerk to please call the roll. Here?
Here.
Councilmember Alston?
Here.
Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. We have some, several ceremonial items tonight that I'm delighted about. We've really got some wonderful, wonderful ceremonial items tonight. And I'm gonna begin by calling the family of Dillard Tier up to join me. We have a proclamation honoring Dillard Tier. So would the members of the family, please, come up? I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then I'll be presenting it to the Tier family. And Rob, you or others may have a comment that you'd like to make. Proclamation memorializing Dillard Tier. Whereas Dillard Tier, one of Durham's most distinguished business and civic leaders, passed away on October 5th, 2018, survived by his wife of 76 years and high school sweetheart, Mildred Roycroft Tier, and his large and loving family. Before I go on, I realize I should introduce this a little bit differently. Before I just read the proclamation, what I wanna say is Durham lost an incredible, incredible citizen. I'm about to read you about his life, but I don't wanna... That's the way I really wanna start. We lost an amazing citizen of Durham. And when you hear the story of this life, as I've tried to capture it in this proclamation, and I took much of it from some of the things that you all had written about him, you will see the amazing life that we are memorializing tonight. So, okay, that's the way I really wanted to start. Forgive me. So, let me do that again. Whereas Dillard Tier, one of Durham's most distinguished business and civic leaders, passed away on October 5th, 2018, survived by his wife of 76 years and high school sweetheart, Mildred Roycroft Tier, and his large and loving family. And whereas Dillard Tier was born in Durham on May 12th, 1920, and in 1940 actively joined his father's firm, the Nellio L. Tier Company, which launched hundreds of major projects during and following World War II, and grew to be one of the nation's largest construction companies under the leadership of himself, his father, and his brother. And whereas Dillard Tier's first assignment with Tier Company was as Assistant Project Manager on the new Raleigh-Durham Airport site in 1941, thus beginning a lifelong love of aviation and RDU, which led to his 31 years of service on the Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority, including seven years as its chairman. And whereas the original RDU tower, astonishingly small by today's standards, was moved to his farm in Durham County and sits 40 feet in the air as an overlook to the pond and pastures. And whereas during the World War II years, the Tier Company had a major role in preparing the country for the war effort, and Dillard was actively engaged. In 1942, he was Assistant Project Manager during the construction of Camp Butner, 15 miles north of Durham, where thousands of U.S. Army troops trained. And he was Supervisor of Construction of a Marine Base near Edenton, a Naval Air Base in Beaufort, South Carolina—I guess they pronounce it Buford down there—and an Air Force Training Base in Danville, Virginia. And whereas over the years, the Tier Company's major projects included airports, dams, and highways, including many segments of the Blue Ridge Parkway, sections of the interstate highway system, and primary highways through Central America, plus highways in Tanzania and an airport in Malawi, as well as numerous commercial buildings throughout the country. And whereas Dillard Tier served as a Durham County Commissioner for four years, was active with the Durham Chamber of Commerce for more than 70 years, including as its president. And whereas Dillard Tier was a lifelong member of Duke Memorial United Methodist Church, where he served as Chairman of its Board of Trustees for many years, was a master mason and a shriner for more than 60 years, belonged to the Durham Kiwanis Club for 60 years, was a member of the Durham County General Hospital Board of Trustees, served on the Board of the Triangle J Council of Governments, was President of Durham's United Way, served on the Board of Durham's Child Guidance Clinic from 1957 to 1974, and as its president for seven years, served on the Board of the Methodist Retirement Home for 22 years, and was active with the YMCA for many years, and helped establish Camp Canada. And whereas Dillard Tier gave time and effort to education throughout his life, serving on the Methodist University Board of Trustees for 32 years, serving on the Board of North Carolina Central University for eight years, and the NC College of Veterinary Medicine for 14 years. And whereas Dillard Tier's family honored him by naming the stage of the Durham Performing Arts Center, the Mildred and Dillard Tier Stage, and the governor of North Carolina honored him in April 2011 with the Order of the Longleaf Pine for service to the state. And whereas through all his productive business and community years, Dillard was always first and foremost a family man, living at his home on Beverly Drive for more than 50 years, and always enjoying best the company of his children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And whereas with the passing of Dillard Tier, Durham has lost one of its most distinguished citizens and favorite sons, who contributed enormously to building the physical environment and the strong civic institutions we enjoy in Durham today. Now therefore I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the 19th of November, 2018, as Dillard Tier Day in the City of Durham, and do recommend its observance to all the residents of this city in honor of his memory and good deeds. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 19th day of November, 2018. For some special memorial proclamations like this, we produce and thank you to the Clerk's Office for producing a really beautiful memorial plaque. And so I wanna present this, Rob, to you and to the members of the family. And if you would like to offer us a few words, that would be great.
Okay, no. I'm gonna give it back to you.
I'll give this to you all.
Thank you, Mayor Shul, and members of the City Council. Mr. Bonfield, Patrick. Patrick left. Daddy was all about loving Durham. His 98 years here, he never had a day that he didn't love or think about Durham. We miss him terribly, but we appreciate you all thinking about him and doing this memorial today, and hope you have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank you.
All right. Our second proclamation tonight is for the Durham, North Carolina Chapter of the Links Incorporated, and Desiree Palmer, I believe, is here. And the chapter president for the North Carolina Durham Chapter of the Links. And if you and the members of the Links would like to come up, that would be fantastic. Whereas the Links Incorporated, an international not-for-profit corporation established in 1946, consisting of nearly 15,000 professional men, professional women of color, and 288 chapters located in 41 states—the District of Columbia, Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and United Kingdom. And whereas the Durham Chapter of the Links Incorporated was inducted into the national body as a 77th chapter in October 11th, 1958, and has served the Durham community for more than half a century, volunteering 31,920 service hours in Durham in the last 10 years with a market value of more than a half million dollars. And whereas for 60 years, members of the Durham Chapter have worked to improve the well-being of Durham citizens through leadership, philanthropy, and service, and have demonstrated a legacy of stepping up and stepping into, leverage their collective resources to provide opportunities for others. And whereas members of the Durham, North Carolina Chapter are accomplished community leaders who support the local Durham economy, hold positions of power as business owners, lawyers, educators, dentists, physicians, and corporate leaders, serve on boards of nonprofits and public organizations as trustees and as trustees of foundations, and share their expertise, professional skills, and financial wealth with nonprofits, congregations, faith-based and community organizations. And whereas in 1991, the chapter was the first black group and the first women's organization to sponsor a Habitat for Humanity House, and invited their spouses to volunteer for this interracial partnership project with the Ino River Unitarian Universalist Church. And whereas the leadership and community impact of the Durham, North Carolina Chapter, the Links, has been acknowledged and awarded in many ways. In 2008 and 2010, the Ford Foundation awarded the chapter $100,000 grants to document the Links' community philanthropy. Now therefore I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby recognize Durham, North Carolina Chapter of the Links Incorporated in the City of Durham, and hereby call upon residents of Durham to celebrate 60 years of dedicated service to the Durham community and the Links Incorporated, and that we extend sincere congratulations to the Durham, North Carolina Chapter of the Links Incorporated for the collaborative, award-winning programs, initiatives, and community service and volunteer efforts. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 19th day of November, 2018. And Ms. Palmer, if you would like to come forward, and here is the proclamation, and we'd love to hear a few words.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Shul, City Council members, citizens of Durham. On behalf of the Durham, North Carolina Chapter of the Links Incorporated, we certainly appreciate you recognizing our 60 years of leadership, friendship, philanthropy, and service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. What you do, we appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, great. So, isn't it fantastic? We have—thank you, actually—we have recognized two, already in these two proclamations, some amazing service over many years to Durham community, and it's just great to have all of you all here. The third of our presentations tonight is another—is continues this emphasis on recognizing service, and that's the Neighborhood Spotlight Award. And I'm gonna ask Councilmember Javier Caballero to join me at the podium here to present the Neighbor Spotlight. And I'm gonna ask Charlita E. Burris of the Edgemont Elms Community to please come forward. And Ms. Burris, if you have family members or friends you'd like to come with you, bring 'em on. Please come up, everybody.
Go for it.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Charlita E. Burris is the recipient of the Neighbor Spotlight for the month of November 2018. The Neighbor Spotlight Award recognizes community members that have gone above and beyond in volunteering their time to serve the community. This month, Charlita Burris, a resident of the Edgemont Elms Community, was nominated and selected because of the wonderful work she has done in her neighborhood, including, but not limited to, leading efforts to increase community involvement and encourage neighbors to get to know each other, hosting successful neighborhood events, including a fall festival and Christmas toy drive, coordinating efforts to support homeless populations, including turkey basket and blanket giveaways. Congratulations, Ms. Burris, on being the November Neighbor Spotlight for the City of Durham, and thank you for all the work you do to improve our Durham community. And you have a whole bunch of folks here. So, thank you all. This is great. Do you wanna say something?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, y'all can do better than that. There's a lot of y'all in here. I would like to say greetings to the mayor and to the city manager, Pro Tim, and everybody. I'm very humbled to receive this award. I've just been in Durham three years. I'm encouraged by my son, who's been here a long time. Listen, I have a word that was given to me when I first came to this area. Don't just talk about it, be about it. So, a lot of people are talking about things, but they're not being about it. So, I congratulate all of y'all that have already received. Congratulations for the things that you've done. I do what I do because it comes from the heart, not just from the mouth. You notice I'm limping. I had surgery in January. So, if I can do something, I just had surgery. Imagine those that have not had surgery. But my heart goes out to the homeless. My mother here is 90 years old, and they just came all the way from Washington, D.C. This is mom. She's 90. And her mom lived to be 100. So, that's—this is my goal. This is my encouragement. I'm grateful to Jacob Lerner, who keeps me on tabs with emailing me. So, I'm gonna tell the city council, if y'all see me or I come to your office—I'm not gonna always want something—I'd like to make you laugh. So, I just might come and call you and make you laugh. Please return my phone calls. Please. I know you got some blockers sometime, you know, that wanna—don't wanna return phone calls. Please return my calls, you know? But I am elated, and I'm grateful for everything that you've done, and I'm gonna take this reward, and I'm gonna keep moving and keep moving. For the next two days, I got to give a shout-out to Community Health Coalition, because they are helping me feed 15 families for the next two days. Thank you. Can I take this now? Oh. That could be a millionaire one day.
Ms. Burris, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Good to see ya. All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember, and Ms. Burris. It's wonderful to be able to honor you tonight. We're really pleased to have you. And now we have another wonderful recognition, and I'm gonna ask Danielle Berman and those others who are here from Book Harvest to please come forward and join me up here. Great. All right. This is a very special proclamation as well. It's a really momentous occasion, and you will hear about it. You'll know what I mean when you hear this. We're honoring one of our great nonprofits tonight, Book Harvest, for a special reason. Whereas Book Harvest believes in the limitless potential of all children and the power of parents to help children achieve their goals. And whereas Book Harvest believes that books are essential to children's healthy development and well-being, and that all children deserve to grow up in book-rich homes and communities. And whereas Book Harvest removes barriers to book ownership, fueling a lifelong love of reading among Durham's children that will enable success in school and life. And whereas Book Harvest is committed to providing high-quality, high-interest, diverse books in which all children can see themselves and their lives reflected. And whereas Book Harvest has partnered with Durham families, schools, and community organizations for over seven years. And whereas Book Harvest has just provided its 1,000,000th free book to a child in Durham. Now therefore I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of November, 2018, as Book Harvest's 1,000,000th Book Month in the City of Durham, and hereby encourage and call upon the citizens of Durham to observe same. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 19th day of November, 2018. And now, Danielle, would you like to say a few words to us?
Thank you, Mayor Shul. Thank you, City Council members, for celebrating with us. Many of you who are familiar to Book Harvest. I will just share that those million books were all donated by our community, so this is really a celebration of our entire community and our support for our kids. So, thank you to our whole community of Durham. Appreciate it.
It's quite an achievement. And now finally, tonight, we are going to have another special recognition. This—I'm gonna ask Bob Klaus, the General Manager of the Durham Performing Arts Center, to come up, and we will talk about the recognition that the theater has recently received.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you, Bob.
DPAC was recently recognized with two very prestigious awards, and I'd like to share these with council tonight, with the mayor, with city staff, and with the citizens of Durham. It's my hope that Durham takes pride in these awards, because they signify not only that DPAC is a great place to visit, but that Durham is a great place to visit. On October the 2nd, the International Entertainment Buyers Association named DPAC as its Theater of the Year. This association is made up of agents, managers, venue managers, promotion companies, and others involved in live entertainment, not only across America but across the world. We were honored to be nominated with other larger cities such as Chicago, Los Angeles, Houston, and Washington, D.C., and even New York City. When DPAC won, I was most happy for DPAC's exceptional, exceptional staff and volunteers. The real stars at DPAC are those that welcome our guests with warmth, friendliness, and the attention to detail that have really become hallmarks of the legendary DPAC experience. And if that wasn't enough, then on October 22nd—excuse me, the 29th—the North Carolina Travel Industry Association awarded DPAC with its Visitor Attraction of the Year Award for North Carolina. This award signifies a North Carolina visitor attraction that exemplifies excellence and sets the standard for an exceptional visitor experience. Mayor Shul, on behalf of Nederlander and PFM, the operators of DPAC, I would like to present these awards to the City of Durham.
Thank you so much, Bob. I just wanna say to Bob, you have done a fabulous job since day one at DPAC as the General Manager, and so much of the success of the theater belongs to you, and of course, as you said, to the wonderful staff who you have. But I just wanna thank you so much for your leadership. It's been excellent. All right. I believe that is the last of our ceremonial items, but what an awesome night of ceremony dedicated to the service of members of our community and to this fabulous theater of which we're all so proud. All right. And now I'm going to ask if there are announcements by members of the council. And first, I will call on Councilmember Mark Anthony Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, colleagues, and good evening to all of you. I wanna continue in the spirit of the award tour that we're on tonight. All of us in Durham know that we are a city on the ascent, and if you look across the landscape of our nation, at any list of a city that's doing big things, Durham is always on that list. I had the great honor of being in California on last week to attend the National League of Cities City Summit. Elected leaders from all over America gather to do workshops and network and talk about best practices and ways that we can improve our cities. But they also hand out a few awards. So, I attended a dinner by the Center for Digital Government that hands out awards and recognizes cities whose technology is cutting-edge. Cities that have very secure systems, cities that use technology to be transparent, cities that incorporate different types of applications and technological on-ramps to their systems to allow folk to access information and interface with their city. Well, guess what? They have categories for sizes of cities, and in the 250,000 to 499,999 population category, one person can make a difference. Durham was awarded second place for Digital Cities Survey Award for governments that use technology to improve transparency. So, this is a—I visited with the folk in technology services last week. I told them that I collected an award, and I would be presenting it tonight to Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager. Congratulations to our folk here at the city. And I wanna turn this over to the manager. I thought about hanging it in my office, but I'm gonna relinquish it to the manager. Congratulations, Durham, for scoring again.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. That's a great—another great award for the City of Durham, and well-deserved. Other announcements. Councilmember Reese. Other announcements, Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have a chance earlier to tell you everything I wanted to tell you about Boy Scout Troop 424, and so I'll take a moment to do that now.
Yeah.
I wanna thank these young people for being here tonight. They were not here just to help us with the pledge, although they did that spectacularly. Thank you. They are here meeting one of the requirements for the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. Mr. Mayor, as you well know, this merit badge is one of the many merit badges required for reaching Eagle Scout rank. And the purpose of the Citizenship and Community Merit Badge is to encourage good citizenship through teaching scouts how local government works and how to participate in government so that they can make a positive impact on their community. So I just wanted to thank those young people for being here, and especially thank Durham's own Senior Assistant City Attorney Fred Lamar, who is a member of the Adult Committee for Troop 424, and is actually the Designated Counselor for the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. So thanks all of them for being here, and thank you, Senior Assistant City Attorney Fred Lamar. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. All right. Any other announcements by, Councilmember Caballero?
I just wanna give a shout out to my hermana, who's sitting in the crowd, all the way from Tucson, Arizona, and my brother, Alson Montserrat and Cami Juarez.
Great. Great to have you all. You can always move to Durham. I also have an announcement. Any other announcements? I have one more. Councilmembers and, and members of the public here tonight, as many of you know, every year I challenge the employees of the City of Durham to a five-mile run. This began when I first got on council, so I believe this is the seventh time that we've had this event. Some years I'm injured and I can't run, but this year I wasn't. And it was a great event. We had, oh gosh, I think 75 people perhaps, members of our city staff, and a few family members as well. And it was, it was a great event. I am, yeah, and so there's some pictures of us. We look amazing. And as, as I will read some of the, some of the information that you need to know, first of all, once again this year, fastest runner in the City of Durham, Brian Poole. Oh my gosh. It's not fair. Last year he won while pushing a baby carriage. This year he did not push the baby carriage, he just pretty much laughed everybody. His time was something around 30 minutes, I believe. I don't have the time right here, but he is a very fast runner. And that was, it was great. We had two runners that, the second and third-place winner, so Brian's in Transportation. The second and third-place winners also are very fast, and both of them are from Public Works. Paul Wiebke in second place, and Sean Doig in third place. And let me just tell you, Paul Wiebke is, he's 55, and the guy can flat-run. And so it was, it was really fun to be out with everybody. I'm gonna read the names of everybody that participated, in addition to the ones I've read, Nathan Rittenhouse, Lloyd Schmiedler, Andrew Bullard, Corey Terry, Regina Youngblood, who, thank you to Regina's department for organizing everything, Timothy Howe, Fabian Wright, Aaron Ortiz, Obed Ortiz, Eric Halsted. Eric has run every year. I think he may be the only person that's run every year. He's often second place, always the bridesmaid, never the bride, as I say. Michael Schreiber, awesome. Diana Schreiber, Will Glenn, J.J. Scott. J.J. was pushing a baby carriage this year, and he beat me. Jeffrey Johnson, Tom Dawson, Sean Huey, William Diaz. William, I think you should know, is a, is a, William is an employee in our Public Works Department. William is currently training to, for the Olympic tryouts for the nation of Puerto Rico on their Greco-Roman wrestling team. So this was a training run for William. And it's awesome to know that we have a City of Durham employee who's working towards the Olympic tryouts, and will be doing that at the end of the year. William "Bo" Ferguson, oh my gosh, fast as greased lightning. Sean McKnight, Sean Tuttle, and Dana Horncole had already run seven miles in the morning before they came back and ran our five miles. Becky Martin, James Miner, Renee Buchanan, Brandy Miner, Emma Gomez, Bertha Johnson, Alethea Hardy, Sharon Williams, Joyce Baker, David Boyd. Awesome, David. Sidney Anderson, Darren Johnson, Shanika Baumann, Kristen Randall, Patrick Walton, Dan Love, Gracie Ferguson, Josh Edwards, Noah Edwards, Melinda Squires Nelson, my archrival, I did beat her this year. Sorry, Melinda. Marcus Belvin, Jasper Petty, Jennifer Buzzin, Tevin West, James Leoni, Norma Washington, also known as Streak, Yolanda Di Robinson, Cheryl McDonald, Delano Simmons, Jay Reinstein, our former city employee, was visiting, visiting us from Fayetteville and walked with us. Abriel Najera, Daven Washington, Keith Short, Carl Brody, Joe Clark, John Ferguson, Henalia Hoberman, Jermaine Bruington, Keisha Barnett, Keith Herman, Gwendolyn Burnett, Veronica Jackson, Yolanda Seaborn. I really wanna thank Gwendolyn, Veronica, and Yolanda for coordinating the event. Andre White, Colleen Toomey, Leslie Kirkman, Kirk St. Aramand, Maureen Devlin, and Sandra Snipes. I wanna thank everybody for being out. For those who beat me, you will not beat me next year. For those I beat, too bad. But it was a wonderful night, a wonderful day, rather, and really appreciate the opportunity to be out with everyone. So thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, you didn't tell us your time, no?
My time, actually I have my time somewhere on here, let's see. My time was 45 minutes and 2 seconds. It's not bad for an old guy, wouldn't you say? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I hadn't been at another event, I definitely, absolutely would not have been able to run five miles, so good job.
Well, I, I think that I won my age group, since I was the only person in my age group. Okay, and with that, we'll move to priority items by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening, everyone. I do wanna thank Councilmember Middleton for picking up that award on our behalf. We appreciate that. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your great enjoyment, enjoyable leadership with our employees. They said something they really look forward to every year, to get out and be part of the, the Run With the Mayor, as we call it now. So we appreciate that very much. We don't have any priority items this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No priority items.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no items.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll now move to the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda can be removed by any council member or member of the public. If they, if the items are removed, they're held to the end of the meeting. The Consent Agenda will, can be approved by a single vote of the council. So I will read the items on the Consent Agenda. Let me just make sure I've got some items here that people wanna speak on. Let's see, item eight, okay. Yeah. So the first item is approval of city council minutes. Item two, 2019 city council meeting schedule. Item three, grant project ordinance, GPO amendments for community development block grants, CDBG, home consortium program grant, home emergency solutions grants, ESG, and housing opportunities for persons with HIV/AIDS, hotspot for 2018-19. Item four, dedicated housing fund, FY18 revised spending plan. Item five, wastewater pretreatment program interlocal agreement between Durham County and the City of Durham. Item six, professional services contract with the Timmins Group, Inc., for the design of the Hoover Road Athletic Park Project. Item seven, design contract with Surface 678 PA, design for the CM Hernan Park Improvements Project. Item eight, proposed lease for Durham District Number Three Substation at 10 Consultant Place. And I'm gonna pull this item. There are a couple of members of the public who would like to speak on this item. That was item eight. And then item 12, proposed acquisition of 2,790.86 square feet of fee simple, 10,209.40 square feet of temporary construction easement from Rugby Road LLC at 4510 Fayetteville Road, Durham, North Carolina 27713, parcel number 146806 for the Fayetteville Road Improvement Project. Item 13, United States Environmental Protection Agency 2018 Brownfield Assessment Grant Project Ordinance. Item 14, contract with Mid-Atlantic Associates for implementation of the 2018 United States Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Grant. Item 16, this item can be found on the General Business Agenda, and item 17 to 19 can be found on the General Business Agenda, public hearings. Councilmembers, you've heard the Consent Agenda, and I will ask for a motion that we approve the agenda with all of the items except for item eight.
So to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and approved, and seconded that we approve the Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our General Business Agenda. And we will begin with item 16, the 2018 Third Quarter Crime Report Presentation. And I'll ask Chief Davis to join us. Chief, good to see you.
Thank you.
We do have some speakers who were signed up, so I think what I will do is I will ask you to give your report. And then once you've given your report, we'll, we'll hear from the speakers, and then we'll have questions from council.
Absolutely.
Okay? Great.
Yes.
Welcome, Chief. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight I will present the Durham Police Department's Third Quarter Crime Report. The report covers the Durham Police Department's six performance measures. Part One Violent Crime, Part One Property Crime, Part One Index Crime, Clearance Rates, Response Times to Priority One Calls, and Staffing Levels. I'll also cover a few of the 2018 Third Quarter Highlights. As for Part One Index Crime, reported Part One Index Crime, which is a total of Part One Violent and Property Crime decreased by 7% during the first nine months of 2018 compared to the same period in 2017. Reported crime was down in five out of seven categories, as well as in overall Part One Violent Crime, Property, and Index Crime. Property Crime made up 84% of all Part One Crime. Larcenies comprised more than half, which was 57% of all Part One Crime. Part One Violent Crime categories include homicides, rapes, robberies, and aggravated assaults. Part One Violent Crime was down by 17% during the first nine months of 2018 compared to the same period in 2017. This percentage reduction was due to double-digit decreases in robberies and aggravated assaults. Robberies and aggravated assaults were at three-year lows for the first nine months of the year. This chart illustrates a weekly comparison of reported violent crime during the first three quarters of 2018 compared to the same weeks in 2017. As you can see, we started off the year really good. During the summer months, we showed upticks in various violent crimes. The chart further illustrates that during the months of June through August and some parts of September, we had experienced upticks in crime. The chart shows that violent crime during the first quarter of 2018 was down significantly compared to the first quarter of 2017. There were 26 homicides during the first nine months of 2018 compared to 16 in the same period of 2017. The table indicates 24 homicides because one case has been cleared and reclassified as self-defense. And in another case, an arrest was made in a 2017 cold case. This is the method in which the UCR crime reporting is compiled. 10 of the 26 cases remain open at this time. Year-to-date, as of today, there are 13 open cases. The number of reported sexual assaults decreased by 3%. There were several cases from previous years that were reported during the first nine months of 2018. The oldest case of sexual assault reported this year is from 1977. Robberies decreased significantly during the third quarter of 2018 to the lowest third-quarter numbers in three years. Investigators arrested several people who were each charged with committing multiple robberies. The number of aggravated assault victims decreased by 16%, and the number of actual incidents decreased by 11% during the first nine months of 2018. These numbers indicate that we have responded to fewer multi-victim incidents this year. The number of shooting incidents dropped by 18%, and the number of shooting victims decreased by 21% during the first nine months of 2018. The total number of victims in multi-victim firearm incidents decreased by a total of Part One Property Crime. Overall, Part One Property Crime was down by 5% during the first nine months of 2018 compared to the same period in 2017. Burglaries were at a 10-year low for the first nine months of the year. This chart illustrates a weekly comparison of property crime during 2018 compared to the same weeks in 2017. So as you can see, similar to the weekly violent crime report, increases in property crime for the first nine months were in the summer months. Part One Property Crime. So larcenies comprised more than half, 57% of all Part One Crime. 44% of all reported larcenies were from motor vehicles or involved auto parts and accessories. More than a quarter of all larcenies involve shoplifting. Again, we experienced an increase in the number of larcenies from motor vehicles, particularly from unlocked vehicles with items in plain sight. And again, we have informed the community of these crimes of opportunity and continue to offer crime prevention tips through press releases, social media posts, and TV interviews as well. We also launched the Park Smart Initiative to combat vehicle break-ins and vehicle thefts. I'll discuss the Park Smart Initiative a little bit further in my presentation. Again, the favorite vehicle for auto thefts during the first nine months was none other than the Honda Accord, which has been the most stolen vehicle for the past several years. Due to the continuous, this continuous problem of people leaving their keys in their vehicle or leaving the vehicle running, we have seen an increase in vehicle thefts. More than 40% of the vehicles stolen this year had keys left in the vehicle or had the engine running. We want to continue to remind our citizens, especially during the upcoming winter months, that this is not a good idea. And that every time you think about getting into a warm car, just keep in mind that the car may not be there when you go outside. So Clearance Rates. We compare our department's clearance rates to other departments our size. As a reminder, last year, due to the population growth, we're now aligned with other cities with populations from 250,000 to 500,000, as illustrated in this chart. 2017 FBI statistics are the most recent ones that are available at this time. Our clearance rates were better than the average for cities, for cities our size in all categories during the first nine months of 2018. I want to commend the investigators that work in our various violent crime units for the work that they've done to achieve such high clearance rates, particularly in homicides and even in robberies. It's very difficult to solve these crimes most of the time, but they do, they have done Priority One Calls for Service. There were 6,723 Priority One Calls for Service in the first nine months of 2018. in the first nine months of 2018, which was a four percent decrease from the same period in 2017. Our average response time was six point oh-three minutes, which did not meet the target of the five point eight. This calculates to be about thirteen seconds off of our target, and that's where it typically fluctuates, anywhere from eleven to thirteen seconds. It's been pretty consistent that way over the last couple of years. We answered fifty-two point three percent of the Priority One calls in less than five minutes in the first nine months of 2018. Staffing. At the end of the third quarter, our sworn staffing was at ninety-seven percent. This was at the end of September. It is currently at ninety-eight percent. Our non-sworn staffing was at eighty-eight percent at the end of September 2018. It is currently at ninety-one percent. Nineteen recruits from Basic Law Enforcement Training Academy Number Forty-Seven graduated on August ninth. There were currently, there are currently, twenty-five recruits in BLET Number Forty-Eight, which started on August thirteenth. This academy is scheduled to graduate in February 2019. Four officers completed the Advanced Law Enforcement Training, which is acronym A-L-E-T, program during the third quarter. This is an accelerated program for officers who are already state-certified and come to us from other agencies. Applications coming into the department are currently up by sixteen point five percent compared to the same period in 2017. U-Visa requests by the quarter. In an effort to assist in the investigation and successful prosecution of certain crimes, the Durham Police Department reviews applications for U-Non-immigrant status. This program, known as U-Vises, is an immigration benefit for victims of certain crimes who are currently or have previously assisted law enforcement or who are likely to be helpful in the investigation and prosecution of criminal activity. On January fifteenth, 2018, the Durham Police Department updated its U-Visa policy for certifications. Historically, most cases were denied due to the lack of workable leads. The new policy allows for qualifying cases less than four years old to be certified, even if the case is inactive. Under the new policy, more requests for U-Visa certifications are being received and more are being approved. As mentioned during my last presentation, the department would seek to expand the four-year period once the caseload that we were currently working was reduced. As you can see in this chart, the department has worked diligently to clear pending applications within the four-year window and will again expand to accommodate older requests in the very near future. The Durham Police Department is taking a proactive role in helping crime victims take advantage of this program when eligible through the utilization of Spanish-language radio, which we interview on a regular basis, and social media platforms to communicate policy modifications. For the first three quarters of 2018, approximately two-thirds of applications have been approved compared to twenty-one percent approval in 2017. National Night Out was August seventh. We had a great National Night Out opportunity to get out and spend time with the community and show them our appreciation for their support in our work every day. Hundreds of community members, along with city officials, participated in National Night Out. This was just an image from a couple of the sites that we visited. The Park Smart Initiative. The Park Smart Initiative focuses on preventing vehicle break-ins and vehicle thefts, which increased significantly during the summer. The program was spearheaded by our Community Resource Unit and was launched in July 2018. We have one hundred and fifty high-quality metal signs, which are placed in areas where we've seen an increase in reports of vehicle break-ins. We provided thirty of these signs to parks and recreation to display at parks throughout the city. Vehicle break-ins and vehicle thefts are often crimes of opportunity. We believe that the Park Smart Initiative is an effective way to remind people to keep their valuables out of sight, take their keys with them, and lock their doors. Just to give you a little bit of overview on outstanding community commitment from a few of our employees, some of our employees carried out acts of kindness and compassion in a very, in various ways. In September, officers from Squad Two-C responded to a disturbance call and ended up contributing their own money to purchase a motel room for several nights for an ill woman until they could find resources to get her long-term help. One day, our records unit civilian employee Brent Shreve was leaving headquarters for his lunch break when he was approached by a man who asked for help to feed his family, which included two young children. Brent came back inside and told his coworker Dwight Bell about the situation. Brent and Dwight went to McDonald's and used their money to purchase two meals for the kids and two meals for the father and other family members. As most of you know, eighteen Durham police officers volunteered to go to Wilmington to help out for a week in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence. They helped with traffic, site security, and responding to calls. They lived in very uncomfortable conditions during their time there, but they found great personal reward in the opportunity to help the citizens and first responders of Wilmington get back on their feet. Four DPD officers from the Durham County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge also went to assist the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. And of course, we held the community grand opening for our new police and 911 facility headquarters located at 602 East Main Street on October twentieth, and hundreds of people attended. We conducted numerous tours that day and continued well beyond the four o'clock end time. The building is now open for public business, reports, desk officers there, and it is fully operational. The final units that will be assigned to this location will move in mid-December. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for a great report. We're now going to hear from members of the public, and then we'll get you back up for questions and comments from the council. Thank you so much. I'm going to call out the names of members of the public, and if you, as I call your name, if you would come over here to the right of the podium, and I'll ask each person to hold their comments to two minutes, okay? Monica Rosa. Brianna Rosa. Margarita Serano Ocampo. Bryant Casarubia Serano. Laura, I'm sorry, I can't read your name. Sorry. Can't read the handwriting, but Leo does, maybe? Alejandra Falladares. Silvia Segundo Felipe Sandiso is the only name listed on that one. And so if you all could all come over in this part of the room, that would be great. Please go ahead.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Monica Rosa. Soy víctima. Vivo en la ciudad de Duran, diecisiete años. Soy mamá. Soy víctima, fui víctima de crimen tres veces, y estamos aquí presente hoy día para pedir a la jefa policía que por favor cambie las pólizas a pela por la visa U, que el estatuto federal dice que son, que no tiene que haber límites para la visa U. Aquí estamos todos hoy día presentes para pedirle por favor que nos ayuden, que no den su voto de confianza. Somos madres, somos esposas, somos hijos, y nada más.
My name is Brianna. I'm Monica Rosa's daughter. My mother was a victim of a crime. Our president just doesn't care that he is taking families away and separating them. I want that to change. I want other immigrants and my mother and family to stay together. Our president is very cruel, and I want everyone to work together and change the long run. Thank you and good night.
Hi. Hi, good night. My name is Brian. I am the son of Margarita Serano Ocampo. My mom is a victim of a crime. It is unfair that my mom has to worry every single day about the crime. What I want from the chief police is to get rid of the restrictions on the visa U. I don't want any families to be separated and to be sad because of that. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Laura Loesa. Yo he sido víctima tres veces a mano armada. Estoy aquí esta noche para pedirle a la jefa de policía que por favor quita los cuatro años de restricción y que no haya límite para que todas las personas que han sido víctima más de cuatro años puedan beneficiarse sobre este programa. Gracias.
Hola, buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Margarita Serano Ocampo, y yo vine a pedirle a la jefa de policía que quite las restricciones de los cuatro años de la visa U, y les vine a pedir a todos ustedes que si nos pueden apoyar en eso. Yo fui víctima en el dos mil nueve, septiembre siete. Es una fecha que no se puede olvidar porque yo tenía una bebé recién nacida cuando se metieron dos personas a saltarme a mi casa. Nos tuvieron secuestradas como dos horas y media. Tenía, tengo tres niños y un hermano que lo golpearon, y quiero ver si nos puede apoyar la jefa de policía, por favor. Gracias.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Silvia Segundo Felipe. Estoy igual a que apoyando al grupo, y yo también fui víctima, este, fui víctima cinco veces, y hoy estamos aquí como grupo a pedirle a la jefa de policía que si puede quitar las restricciones de la visa U, porque yo creo que ya es tiempo de recibir un apoyo. Tenemos dignidad, y pedimos pues apoyo a todos ustedes, y queremos parar la separación de familias unidas, porque yo creo que ya basta, o como cada uno de ustedes presentes aquí esta noche, yo creo que ustedes como padres no les gustaría que el día de mañana sus hijos se les quitaron, que fueran separados. Yo soy madre soltera, tengo quince años aquí en este país, tengo un hijo que va a la escuela pública de Duran, y a mí no me gustaría que el día de mañana me separaran de mi hijo, por eso vengo hoy a pedirle a la jefa de policía que quite las restricciones de la visa U y que nos apoyen. Gracias.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, I see, oh, I'm sorry, one more person.
There's one more, yeah. Just want to thank you for all the great job you guys are doing. I think there's a lot of humanity in this council, and I think this is the plea of the victims here and the plea to, you know, our chief. We're seeing great, great data that's showing, you know, improvement, and I think it's about, it's about seeing the humanity in these cases when it concerns victims. There isn't any status, color, or origin, national origin, or anything. Victims are victims. We just heard from our presentation that there's a victim who of sexual assault, aggravated assault, from nineteen seventy-seven, and who just reported it now. I mean, the fact that it takes so long to process crime, when you're a victim of crime, Me Too movement tells us that. We just saw on national television, you know, something from decades ago, and the claim is, why didn't she report it then? So when it comes to statutes of limitations, when it comes to putting a cap on things, people take time to process, and I know that, understand that the department is handling as much as, you know, the manpower, there's a lot of considerations there. But we definitely want you to understand, like, there are a lot of people out here who have been victims not just once, you know, we heard three times, and other people are not going to come forward, and it's going to be really hard for people to collaborate and cooperate with our law enforcement officers if they feel like, you know, there's not a benefit in collaboration, there's not a benefit in giving, like, useful information that can definitely, you know, be leading to solve these issues. And I know, I know that there are a lot of issues, a lot of considerations, but putting a cap is telling some victims their situation, their experience, doesn't matter. I hope you consider lifting the cap. Maybe, maybe there's ways to continue this conversation about what that would look like, but I know that federally, when I look at the policy, there doesn't seem to be a cap as part of the eligibility criteria. So, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. Could you state your names?
My name is Sandro, actually. I'm here on behalf of the family who, who didn't go through something like four years ago, who have gone through them, some tough years in the two thousands, which is way more than four years. I think you should lift the year limit. If not, I'm very proud of the family who came to speak here. If you lift that, this place will be packed. There's families out there who are scared to talk, but yet, if they talk, nothing's going to happen. You guys want, the police department wants a lie from us. They want us to report crime if something happens, but when we do, we don't get the same response. So I really hope you guys help us, and I hope City Council does help us also, just like earlier, is like, got to be talked to, I forget what it was, but you can just say, you can just speak positive about this. You actually got to do something for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chief Davis, why don't you come back up, and we'll have some comments from council members. Councilmember Caviato?
I just wanted to acknowledge the children who came up here and spoke on behalf of their parents. That was very brave of you. Thank you. I les quiero decir que debemos, ustedes deben mejor, y lo estamos neando ahora, especialmente con el lenguaje que les ofrecemos.
Thank you very much. Council members, questions, comments?
Well, also, Mr. Mayor, I'll just echo my colleague and thank everyone for their comments, and particularly the children. I think anytime a child steps up to, you know, make a statement about what they believe in, I think it's really empowering. So, thank you all, and, you know, I know that we've had this conversation here before about, you know, our U-Visa policy, and you mentioned it briefly in your presentation. I think it'd be great if we kind of come back to that now and discuss what changes you have considered.
First of all, I want to thank those individuals that came tonight to speak. I've met with some of you personally, not just once, but on a couple of occasions. There have been numerous discussions in reference to U-Visa, and I don't think you could find a more sensitive leader about this issue than myself. The change in the policy began with me, so I'm very sensitive to the issue, and we discussed how we could continue to allow individuals to be a part of this program gradually, and this year, we've made significant progress. And in my report, I think my report really just echoes what I said in my previous presentation, that I was committed to making those changes as we were able to do so. What I didn't want to happen is that we open a floodgate of applications that people would expect that they would get a response within a week or two, because it does take a significant amount of time, you know, at times on some of these cases. And Captain Bond, who was here earlier, she does, yeah, she's still here, and she does a good job at getting, getting these cases done. I've even given her some assistance recently to help get more done. So in my presentation, I talked about expanding, and that is so that we can look at the other cases that, or individuals who have been denied in the past. We have some applications that we have in our coffers that we will begin to look at as we expand the program, and also look at any cases that are still coming in. Hopefully, we won't have as many cases, you know, in the future as it relates to crimes against our Hispanic community members, but I'm certainly receptive to expanding the program, and I think I was very clear about, about that. To, to say that, to take restrictions off, I don't look at it as taking To say that, to take restrictions off, I don't look at it as taking the restrictions off or there being any restrictions, it's just that my commitment was, and it has been, to change the policy as we get to a point where we can take in more applications. And as you can see, this year, we had an uptick at the beginning of the year. It consistently declined, and we're at a point now where we're ready to look at additional applications.
Thank you.
And we can continue that process. It doesn't... It doesn't do anything to this program, or there isn't any personal reason why we wouldn't continue to take in applications. We just don't want to take in a thousand and realize that we don't have the manpower right now to go through that many applications, but we're doing really well as far as the expansion that we did this past year, and to even look at two or three years beyond that.
Mayor Protan?
Lo siento que mi español no es muy bueno, pero quiero dar las gracias a todos ustedes para venir aquí y compartir las historias con ustedes, y especialmente a los niños. Muchas gracias para hablar con nosotros.
Other comments? I'll just add to that. Gracias a todos los que salieron a hablar esta noche. Le damos la bienvenida al ayuntamiento y nos tomamos muy en serio sus palabras. And I especially want to say to Bryant and Brianna, thank you so much for being here and for representing your families and your community, and you spoke very well, so it's great to have you here.
Just separately, I brought this up at our last council meeting, but I do want to just say to you how grateful I am to the department for initiating the Safe Places program and initiative. I think it's a huge step to, you know, bringing the community in to help us prevent, you know, violence and harassment against LGBT community, so just want to, you know, acknowledge you here.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
It was a good day. Thank you.
I want to appreciate, Chief, the work that you all have done, and Captain Bond, that the tremendous expansion that we have seen in the UVisa program, and that the fact that that's making a positive difference in the lives of many members of our community. And it has been a real turnaround from where we were a year ago, and I think that our new policy has been very, very productive and constructive, so thank you. And I also want to appreciate your interest in expanding it. I think that, you know, that all of us on the council are interested in that, and I know that you are as well, and appreciate the way in which you're going about it, and just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Chief Davis.
Hello.
I want to echo what my colleagues have said about how much we appreciate the policy change that you made when you came on board to putting time, energy, and resources into processing these UVisa applications. As the mayor said, it's made a huge difference, and the data really show how many more of these are being processed by your department. I also take heart from your statement in the presentation that you're going to be looking to accept more applications in the very near future. I wrote down. And as I said last quarter when we talked about this, I hope you will be mindful of the resources that you need to do that, and will talk to us about any additional needs you see in that area, because I can tell you that that's something that those of us sitting up here are very interested to help out with if you think that would be helpful.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to mention while I had the opportunity, normally I like to talk to identify a couple of the great stories of your officers from your more detailed report, unfortunately, you pulled into your presentation the story I was going to tell, which is great. I'm glad to see those officers getting the credit they deserve, and you certainly don't need to hear me talk about it, but what I did want to talk about also was to take a longer view at the crime rate in the city of Durham. It's something that I don't think gets enough people understand, really, where we are compared to where we've been. Your department keeps great statistics, publishes every week a year-to-date data sheet, an Excel spreadsheet, about crime in the city of Durham, comparing current, the current nine months of the year to the five-year average of the years, five years immediately preceding this year. When you look at that spreadsheet, what you'll see is that during that period of time, well, first of all, the city of Durham has expanded in population over that period of time about 12%. Current population of Durham is around 267,000 people or thereabouts. Over that same period of time, violent crime, the number of violent crimes has gone down 21%. The overall rate of crime in Part I crime, both violent crime and property crime, has gone down 21%, while our population has increased, and that is a testament to our entire department and the approach that the city overall is taking in trying to make this city a better place to live. We still have a lot of work to do. I hope we can see an expansion of the UVisa program shortly, but I just want to say how grateful I am, both to you and the folks that have been working in the department for some time, to make that kind of difference in the life of our city. It's something we don't talk about enough, and I just want to say thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chief, and to the command staff, always good to see you all in the chamber. I think your work on the UVisa has been perhaps one of the greatest steps to align this city's values with our actions, and I want to congratulate you, and we've still got work to do, we know, but I want to commend you and the staff, and to our neighbors, our residents, our citizens, our friends that have come out tonight, who have given voice, who have made this story real for us, and not just numbers on a paper. So, I want to just commend you, Chief, and commend the bravery of our citizens as well. I didn't want to ask a specific question about the current class going through, I guess it's BLET. Do you have any demographical information on the breakdown of that class, this current?
Don't have it with us tonight.
Okay.
But we can certainly get it to you.
Cool. And this is an encouraging report, and we've been getting a number of encouraging reports from you. I just want to ask if you want to take the opportunity to assure us that your methodology in compiling statistics is above board and sound, and that these numbers are real, and assure the people and citizens and residents of Durham that crime really is going down in our city and that you're not cooking the books. You just want to take the opportunity?
I would love to take that opportunity.
Please do.
We do nothing... It does nothing for us or this city to cook the books, you know? We are residents here just like other folks, and what you see is the work that these men and some women do every day. And sometimes, they get a little frustrated with me because I want them to be in areas that, you know, they feel like they're already, we're already there, we're already... But we're trying to take the department from good to great. We just are. The numbers that you see are accurate numbers. These officers feel really good about the work that they've done this year. We're not where we'd like to be with homicides, but as we all know, you know, there are a lot of elements that go along with dealing with homicides. A lot of it has to do with our gang-involved activity and so on, but as it relates to robberies, aggravated assaults, you can't cook the books when somebody gets shot. So, thank you for giving me that opportunity to assure our residents that these numbers are correct. We have one of the best crime analysts, knock on wood, that he will stay with us. We have one of the best crime analysts and his team that does this work every day, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Chief, I'll just add to what's already been said in terms of the report. Violent crime down by 17% in the first nine months of the year over last year is a big number. I doubt if there are any communities in America, or very few of our size cities, that are having that kind of success, and I think that we have to be careful with that because we know it's hard to maintain it.
It is.
But let's enjoy the fact that we are experiencing this success, and let's congratulate our command staff, some of our members are here, and the entire force for the work that you're doing. And I also agree about our crime analyst and appreciate your comments on that. I think that our crime analysis is absolutely great, and the level of detail at which this is available to us is amazing, so I think that's just also been a real strength. Congratulations on the clearance rates. As you mentioned, they're above, up above the national average, and that's great. The fact that we are at now 98% fully staffed for sworn officers is a big change, and I think that some of the actions that we've taken in terms of increasing pay, providing benefits, and also the work that you all have done in the department to make the department an attractive place to work is bearing fruit. I like the results from the misdemeanor diversion court continue to show excellent results in terms of people who are not reoffending in both the, in both of the age groups, for the under-18 age group and also for the 18 to 21. So, that's great that we continue to do that work. I did want to ask you about the ParkSmart, and my question is, are we, are, is your staff working with Beverly's staff in terms of the city publicizing this park? You know, the whole part, publicizing the idea as we go to the winter, don't leave your keys in your car, and, you know, making more of a campaign around that. Are there, are you all working?
Collaborating.
With the city?
Yes, yes, we are. Will does an excellent job working with Beverly because we know that the reach is just that much greater when we work through the city as well.
Fantastic.
And Parks and Recreation is working with us as well.
Fantastic. I know that also that we have had, a couple of TV stations have approached me just to ask, are there anything that we would like to provide community service announcements for, and this might be an opportunity for that, so I could speak to staff after that, after the meeting about that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments, councilmembers? Any questions or comments?
I would just...
Councilmember Freeman?
I would also like to congratulate on presenting a fine nine months of the year. I really want to thank the children for being here as well. I'm not going to try to speak Spanish today, but it's important to recognize that this organizing that's happening is very important to our community as a whole, and I really appreciate you all being here. And it's important to keep the conversation going, and so I just want to make sure we end on that note and making sure that we know that this conversation will continue, and it's really important to recognize that this is not an issue around whether or not we will, it's a matter of how we do, and so it's just, it's just a matter of making sure that folks here understand that their work is not going unnoticed, and also as well as the police force, you know, the work of Captain Bond and the work of each and every captain here and every officer here serving for the city. I really enjoyed the opportunity to get to tour the facility and see just how much has been, has been put into the technology and the thought process behind how departments are organized and who's doing what in what area. There's a lot of cogs in this wheel, and it's important to recognize that we're all a part of it and continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Protan?
Thank you. I did have one comment. I, we don't usually bring this up during the report, but the clearance rates for all of the crimes that you have listed are significantly above the FBI rates, and especially so for the violent crimes that we're most, that we're most interested in focusing on. So, just wanted to point out that it's clear that your officers are doing an incredible amount of work to actually solve, to solve these crimes, and are meeting, are meeting and exceeding these standards by quite a bit.
Thank you, councilmember Johnson. They are exceptional, and I'm not just saying that across country. When you think in terms of investigations, when they clear some of these cases, it's amazing, so I owe a lot to the team here and to the leadership for the work that they're doing to keep, keep our folks on it and keep them focused and keep them motivated, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Freeman?
In addition, Mayor Protan brought to mind another issue in recognizing that there may be some miscommunication in the community around who does the investigation on certain cases, and I want to make sure that everyone's aware that it's actually at the state level that a certain case is being proceeded on, and I would love for us to have a conversation about how folks can be engaged in support and trying to push so that the state level of investigations, clearance rates actually move up as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments? Councilmember Caviato?
Yeah, so, ditto what most of my colleagues have said, this is excellent. My whole time on council has been just stellar as far as crime, like, I don't actually have, I'm like, yay, this is great. So, thank you. I have a high amount of confidence in you as a chief and in your department, and you know how I feel about UVisa's. I've said that many times, so I will not belabor that point. I do want to end on the folks who came tonight to speak to us. We need you here. Please come back. Please share what you need from your councilmembers. This is your space. Les quiero decir a los que vinieron acá a hablar con nosotros, que por favor vengan de nuevo. Esto es su lugar. Es importante compartir lo que quieren decir a nosotros. Es nuestro trabajo. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Thank you, Chief.
Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. All right. Thank you so much, and now we'll move to item 18. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Anderson. 17, zoning map change for Barbie Road 54 townhouses. This is a public hearing item, and I will ask our staff for their presentation. Ms. Sonyak, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Jamie Sonyak with the Planning Department. Requests for a zoning map change has been received from Eden's Land for a 14.38 acre tract. The subject site is located at 1007 East NC 54 and 6452 Barbie Road. The site is presently zoned general commercial with a development plan to allow up to 160,000 square feet building area for all uses allowed under the commercial general zoning district except cemeteries, passenger terminals, self-storage, and wireless facilities. Mr. Edens plans to change this designation to commercial general with a development plan to allow for a maximum of 112 townhouse units. The parcel is currently designated commercial on the future land use map, which would be consistent with the zoning change. Durham Planning Commission, at their September 11, 2018 meeting, recommended approval of the proposed commercial general zoning district by a vote of 10 to 2. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and policies and ordinances. Two motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt a consistency statement, and the second is to adopt a zoning ordinance.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sonyak. Did you mention that this has been advertised as...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't, I, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, Pat and with the Planning Department, I can certify for the record that this public hearing item has been properly noticed as required by law. There's an affidavit to that effect on file with the Planning Department.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Sonyak. You always do a great job of presenting. You've heard from staff, and now I'm going to declare this public hearing open, and first I'm going to ask, are there any questions by members of the council for our staff? Any questions for staff? Hearing none. We do have one person who has signed up to speak on this, and that is Mr. Jared Edens. Mr. Edens, why don't you come to the podium, but before you do, let me ask now, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this public hearing item? Anyone? Okay. Mr. Edens, I'll give you three minutes, and then if you need more, we can figure that out.
Thank you. Good evening, Jared Edens with Eden's Land. I appreciate your time this evening. I'll try to keep things brief. As Jamie mentioned, and I know some of you remember, we were here a little over a year ago requesting a retail project, and it turns out the retail market never developed as we anticipated, but the townhome market very much developed and is existing along that corridor now. You've got a lot of demand for townhomes in that area, so we're back before 49 to try to change that zoning to go back to residential. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We have no opposition, I'm aware of. We'd like to mention two additional proffers that we make this... We'd like to mention two additional proffers that we made this evening. One would be a payment of fifty-five hundred dollars to Durham Public Schools, and that would, a second proffer would be a payment of twenty thousand dollars to the Affordable Housing Fund, both of which would be due prior to the first final plat for the project, I believe.
Could you repeat that last number?
So a payment of fifty-five hundred dollars to Durham Public Schools, and a payment of twenty thousand dollars to the Affordable Housing Fund.
And did you want to know when that was, did you want to know when that was being paid? Is that also part of what your question was?
Yes, sure.
Could you also repeat that, Jared?
And, and it would be due at the first final plat for the project.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, thank you.
Thank you so much. You have heard, Mr. Edens, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? If not, I'll ask now councilmembers, any, any questions or comments from Mr. Edens?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the proffers to the EPS and to our housing fund. What are the price points of the townhome?
It's not set yet, the end user's not set a hundred percent yet, but I anticipate they'll be very comparable to the Meadows North project that's directly across the street, across Barbie Road. So I'm going to anticipate two-twenty, two-thirty, that kind of price point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Caballero.
Just looking at BPAC comments, and I was just wondering if there were any updates to any of the suggestions that they had made.
Mr. Edens, do you want to, the question was about the BPAC comments from Councilmember I believe these were the same BPAC comments that...
Yeah, they, these were, they're requested at, at last year as well as part of the retail zoning, and our issues, some of them are requesting changes to property that's with, within a controlled access right-of-way with DOT, Highway forty and things like that, that very difficult to work in and get permits for, so we didn't really think we could commit to something like that, that I couldn't guarantee we could do.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you for the proffers on the Affordable Housing Fund and Durham Public Schools. Any other coun, any other questions or comments, councilmembers? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is back before the council, and I will accept a motion on the consistency statement.
Mr. Mayor, I just delivered a couple of brief comments.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reese, please do.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you may not know this, but I was asked, let's say about three or four months ago, to identify for someone my biggest regret on serving on this council, and I thought about it for a while, and it involves the, this case, but not in this iteration, it came back, it was before us, about fourteen months ago, for a commercial zoning. And my regret is not that I lost that vote six to one, it was that I did not announce my vote before I voted. My colleagues in the council deserve to know how I intend to vote and why, and I felt really dumb that night because I don't think I did my job that night. And so I am doubly glad to see this matter back before us today so that I can tell you that I intend to support the zoning map change, and also that we can, that I, I believe the developers found a use that's more in tune with the surrounding area in, in light of the many other commercial nodes within a relatively short distance from this intersection. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember.
And, and thank my colleagues for your patience.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor...
Councilmember Freeman.
In light of Councilmember Reese's comments, I think it's important to note that I was really on the no side of this until I heard some of the information tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I will accept a motion on the consistency statement.
A move.
Been moved and seconded that we pass the consistency statement. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. I'll now accept a motion to adopt the ordinance.
A move.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt the ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move to item eighteen, and this is the FY two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty Annual Action Needs Public Hearing. This is a public hearing that we have every year to receive comments on the actual annual action plan related to community development needs, and I see that we have with us our Community Development Director, Reginald Johnson, welcome.
Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Reginald Johnson, Director, Department of Community Development. This is our first of two annual public hearings on our federal entitlement programs, but the purpose is, tonight is to listen to citizens' comments as to put, as we develop the plan in the next coming months, we'll have another public hearing next year. What I'll do is first turn it over to Wilmer Conyers, Ms. Wilmer Conyers, to read the details into the record before we begin, begin the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Conyers.
Welcome, Ms. Conyers.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shul, members of City Council, Wilmer Conyers, Federal Programs Coordinator. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen comments on the community development needs in Durham communities as it relates to the use and receipt of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership, HOM, Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, Hoppla Funds. This public hearing is a requirement for the preparation and submission of the city's fiscal twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Annual Action Plan. Notice of this, notice of this hearing was properly advertised in the Herald Sun, Cape Passa, and Carolina Times newspapers, as well as via General Listserve and the department's website. As a recipient of CDBG, HOM, ESG, and Hoppla Funds, the city is required to hold at least two public hearings prior to the submission of the Annual Action Plan. The first meeting must be held early in the developmental stage of the plan. We anticipate the second public hearing will be held in March or April of twenty nineteen. In addition to the city, in addition, the city is required to publish a copy of the Annual Action Plan for at least thirty days prior to its submission. The city's Annual Action Plan is due to HUD by May fifteenth. The Department of Housing and Urban Development has not yet announced the FY twenty nineteen entitlement allocations. We anticipate those allocations will be announced in the spring of twenty nineteen. For planning purposes, the city expects to receive approximately one point nine million in CDBG funds, one million in HOM, one hundred and sixty thousand in ESG, and three hundred and seventy thousand in Hoppla Funds. In closing, a summary of comments from this public hearing and written comments received from citizens during the development of the action plan will be incorporated into the final twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Annual Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conyers. This is a public hearing, and we have two people who have signed up to speak, Larissa Seibel and Muna Mujahid, and if you all would please proceed over here to this side of the room, and you each have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and welcome.
If you don't mind, I see it's a long, long step, too.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larissa Seibel, twenty-four ten Par Place, and I'm here to thank the City Council and staff from the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit. We did this last year, and this year we've had an amazing year with some very important steps towards affordable housing, and we're very, very proud of the cities working with the whole community so all of us can afford affordable housing in the near future. We do have a lot more to do, and we're taking these steps to preserve and create affordable housing around transit, and we know the city is making affordable housing a priority with our public land, with developments, and with funds. And in fact, tomorrow I think we'll be talking about your policy about making sure that city land is prioritized for affordable housing whenever possible. We have some specific things that we've worked with you on, together, building affordable apartments at the Durham Station, so important to have extremely low-income people who need both affordable housing and transit to be right there at the bus station. Finding developers to build significant affordable housing at the old police headquarters, again, right there at the bus and train stations. Renovating housing with the Durham Housing Authority and supporting nonprofits to build and repair homes. And the police department reminded me also, those that you support who do the things you may not see every day to serve people. The services that we provide to people who are homeless and transitioning into housing is so important. And helping longtime residents stay in their homes, we want to keep working with you on that, as well as all these other things. And I know you'll hear from Peach and other groups about applying for lead and healthy homes funds to make homes safe for children. So we really look forward to another year of working with you, of expanding the work that we have done together, and we hope to house every person in safe, quality, affordable housing in Durham in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the partnership of all the groups that you recommend, represent.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Could you state your name and address?
My name is Muna Mujahid, ten one hundred Stallion Way of Hamon, North Carolina. I came tonight, I've been working, I used to work on affordable housing in this community for over twenty-five years, and I came tonight to ask you, and I guess to beg you, to really, really consider being honest about what we're trying, what you have done to the citizens in Durham, not you necessarily per se, but when I look at all the growth and the development downtown Durham and people are so happy, my heart breaks because I've been out here for twenty-five years fighting for people to have affordable housing, and it's just like, one day I looked up and the Borg was here, and it just took over. And I'm not a person that's against development for people, but my thought is, people want to say, Bill, Bill, did this, they want to point the finger, but a whole lot of people conspire to make sure we're where we are right now with affordable housing in Durham. This is not a problem that just came up yesterday. People saw this coming, people tried to pretend it didn't come, and just as much as all those buildings are down there, my thought is this, if people come here with all the money that they have and we're so prosperous, why can't there be some kind of partnership with those people that have all the excess? Why can't they be asked or almost demanded to build for people that don't have? You know, I'm just a regular person, and I'm at a point in my life, I'm sixty years old, been doing housing work for years, and I can't even afford to live in, in, in this city anymore. And when I see people out here with mental health issues and other kinds of things, and apartments are fourteen, these are mortgage prices for people. So again, there are going to be some of us, I look at Larissa and many of us who've been out here for years, I don't want to die fighting this fight. And you know, so we're putting on one face in the public, oh, we're so wonderful, and then we have all these people that have no place to live? We have to do better, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we now have Jarvis Martin. Mr. Martin, if you could state your name and address. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jarvis Martin, I reside at three six oh eight Mossdale Avenue here in Durham, and I'm here tonight, first of all, to thank the council and all of you for your efforts that you have put into affordable housing because there is a tremendous need, but also I want to call to your attention as we look towards the efforts of building new affordable housing that we have to keep an eye on the affordable housing that we have, and I'm here tonight speaks, to speak specifically about a venture that I'm involved in and thankful to the City Council pass who participated with us, and that is the Stewart's Heights, Stewart's Square community. That is, in two thousand and twenty, we're going to have fifty-four of those units, and in succession years coming forth, another forty and another twenty-four of those units. That's going to be coming due in terms of our investors who, their fifteen-year period is going to be up. So I definitely want to call that to the attention of the council as you look forward. We've had some preliminary conversation with Mr. Johnson and his department, but it is our desire, and hopefully the council will keep an eye on the fact, that we need to also be mindful of keeping those properties that are currently serving the needs of our community and providing decent and safe affordable housing to the community, that we are at a point now where we're going to have to refocus on those and try to put forth the necessary resources to keep those properties affordable, because those investors that we are talking to, they know what's going on in the Triangle, they know what's going on in Durham, and all of them see an opportunity for them to exit, and they want to exit, they do not plan to try to stay on for another fifteen years. But we would like to, myself and my partner, to make certain that the council is aware of that and that these units can remain affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone here that would like to speak at this public hearing? Let me just say to all, all three of the speakers that came, we take your concern very seriously. Ms. Mujahid, thank you for your words. We understand the situation that we're facing in Durham, and we all know that while many of our residents are prospering with our newfound prosperity, there are many that are not, and we are, I can tell you that I and many people up here work on this every single day and take it very, very seriously. We are spending a lot of money and a lot of effort to try to build and preserve affordable housing, and we will continue to, and I'm sure we'll be increasing those efforts. Your words are not lost on us, and I want you to know that. Mr. Martin, thank you for being here. As you may be aware, that one of the council's priorities in affordable housing is the preservation of existing affordable units, and especially those units which are coming out of their mandatory period of affordability, such as the units that you described. So I appreciate that you've already begun discussions with our Community Development Department. I know that they will try to work with you because that is one of our priorities, and we appreciate your bringing that to us. Thank you so much. All right, any other, any, anyone else that'd like to speak at this public hearing? Anyone else? Any councilmember comments, questions? Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I also want to echo the mayor and recognizing that I really appreciate the work that both Ms. Seibel and Ms. Muna have been doing in this community for longer than twenty-five years, and I want to make sure that I press upon that it's not just housing that's the issue, and that as a council, we've recognized that that shared prosperity is not there, and it's because income is the issue. And so we have to focus more on how we increase income opportunities beyond just jobs for folks of color specifically, because that's where the hardest-hit community is, it's Black and Latino specifically, and I'm not blinded by what has happened. I'm very clear, and which is, which is hugely a part of why I sit here today. It's important to make sure that we're working at this from all angles, and I want to make sure that I impress upon both of you to stay engaged, because I know that you have a wealth of wisdom and experience and knowledge that we do not have, and I'll repeat that, we do not have. And if you walk away or you decide to stop, we will lose. And then also to Mr. Jarvis, I really appreciate you bringing up Stewart and Stewart's Heights and Stewart's Square. I also want to bring up, make sure we're pointing to places like the Community Builders Sites in East Durham as well. There are multiple sites throughout the city that have affordable housing, that if we don't focus our attention on making sure that the repairs and maintenance is maintained, it won't be affordable in any way, shape, or form. It'll look a lot like what we're doing at, at the bus station right now, and it'll be far more expensive than it should be. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear that, of what your comments are, I really appreciate you sharing them this evening, and I want to, I want to hope that there's more people saying the same thing at the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Are there any other comments? If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. I do not believe that we need to take any action tonight other than to have the hearing. So thank you very much, Ms. Conyers and Mr. Johnson. We'll now move to item nineteen, the resolution approving the issuance of the, by the Arizona Industrial Development Authority of Student Housing Revenue Bonds, Provident Group, North Carolina Central University Project Series two thousand and eighteen. Welcome, Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, I'm David Boyd, Finance Director. This public hearing is being held pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, which requires the City Council to approve the issuance of any tax-exempt bonds within the city's jurisdiction. This hearing has been properly advertised, and an affidavit of publication is on file with the clerk. The issuance at hand is by the Arizona Industrial Development Authority for the benefit of North Carolina Central University's student housing project in an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty million dollars. The city is not financially responsible for repayment of the debt, and the City Council's consideration of this resolution is required only due to federal tax law in order for the borrower to access the tax-exempt market. Additional details regarding a transaction have been invited to you. Representatives from the university are... Representatives from the university are here, and I'm happy to any questions, answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you so much. We're now going to, you, we've heard from staff, and now I'm going to open the public hearing. And I see that we have one person signed up, Akua Matherson. Did I get that name right? Great. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item as Ms. Matherson comes up? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Welcome, Ms. Matherson. We're glad to have you. Could you give us your name and address? And you have three minutes.
My name is Akua Matherson, and I reside in Greensboro. However, I work for North Carolina Central University, so my address for these purposes are 1801 Fayetteville Street. I don't have any comments. I misunderstood the process. I'm available to answer any questions, should you have them.
Thank you. That's, we appreciate your being here. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this public hearing item? Anyone else? If not, I'm going to declare that this public hearing is closed, and the matter is back before the council to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of these bonds.
Move the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the resolution, and I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Thank you, Ms. Matherson. We appreciate your being here. Now, we'll have one more item, which is item eight, which is pulled from the consent agenda. Item eight is proposal lease for Durham District Number Three Substation at 10 Consultant Place. And we have two speakers on this item, Reginald Thompson and Trevor Wells. And if you all both could come over here to my right, that would be great, and welcome. You each have three minutes. If you could give us your name and address, that would be great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Reginald Thompson, and I am speaking as a grad student at North Carolina Central University. I fully support the police department's substantial and whatever else is necessary for the Durham police to properly do their jobs. But I come before you today to address the shooting death of Deandre Ballard. I'm here to talk about the incident and how it affected the North Carolina Central University community. It shattered our peace and made us feel vulnerable. Campus crossing as a corporate apartment community for students has done nothing to address or explain this incident to us or ask us about our concerns. We are nothing more than dollar signs to them. Consequently, I and many students respectfully ask that the Durham police refer this investigation to the State Bureau of Investigation so that the community could have confidence in the findings and release the autopsy. Knowing Deandre as an upcoming college graduate whose life was cut down by the something senseless has left not only the school, the community in shock and disbelief, I acknowledge and understand that the family would be speaking to the city manager, and I learn, and I am on board with that decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. And I'll comment on that after we hear from Mr. Wells. Mr. Wells, you also have three minutes. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Wells, and I reside at 909 Cook Road. I first addressed the council on this issue on October 1st. It's now been six weeks. Those of us in the NCCU community are concerned about the length of this investigation. We are concerned that there does not appear to be any seriousness with regard to this investigation. We are concerned that the person who shot and killed one of our students was questioned and let go that night, and we still don't know the identity of that person. We are concerned based on things that have happened in the community with regard to shootings at, a shooting at McDougal Terrace. The autopsy and the SBI investigation and the subsequent reasons not to charge in that incident were very concerning. And the length of this investigation does not lend to confidence. We are asking that this community take this process seriously. When someone discharges a weapon, when a police officer discharges a weapon, he's benched. The security guard in this incident went back to work within either a day or a week, depending on the news source that you read. Campus crossing has not addressed this incident. The security company has stood behind its code words of fearing for one's life. This young man was someone who faculty members vouched for on television. This young man was someone who was loved, respected, and someone who was going to make a contribution. And if it were a situation similar to this that happened at Duke University, and a Duke University student was killed, this would not be the response. We respectfully ask that the Durham Police Department refer this investigation to the State Bureau of Investigation, and that they release the autopsy report, and that those findings be made public so that we can have confidence that this investigation was made in the way that it should be. Because in this community, that does not always happen. And just to say this, my interactions with the Durham Police Department have, for the most part, been positive. I've been in a couple of emergency situations, and they handled themselves with decorum and with professionalism. But in this instance, don't feel that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you, hearing from you very much, Mr. Wells. First, I want to ask the city manager to give us an update on what he knows about the state of the investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Chief Sarvis is still here as well. He may want to, to comment on anything. I missed that. And as we've told a number of, of the Ballard family, we also are, are very concerned about the length of time that the, the matter has been under review. It is something that is still under investigation. No final decisions have been made, but we are continuing to await the results of a number of, of lab tests. It is ironic that the reference to turn the matter over to the SBI is what is being requested when, in fact, that's the group we're waiting to hear from. We have, we have been waiting for many, many weeks. We are very frustrated by the, the time that it has taken for those results to be, to be brought forth. It is a matter that I believe the district attorney and the district attorney-elect are also continuing to work on. But until such time as those results are brought forth, the police department is in a position that they can't complete their work and the investigation, and that's, that's kind of where it stands. Chief Sarvis, did I miss anything? If...
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. I want to reiterate what the manager said, and appreciate both of you all for being here, and say to you that we share your frustration with the length of time that this investigation's taking. I, the, your words were very eloquent, and the pain that you are feeling is the pain that, is pain that is shared by this whole community. And what you said about this young man and his promise is not something that is lost on us. So, we are in the difficult situation that we're, that we're frequently in, you may be surprised to know, with SBI crime lab, the period of time it takes them to turn this, turn around results. That's not unique to Mr. Ballard's case. It's, it's very, very frequent that our, our crime labs at the state level are very underfunded, and we're frequently not able to get results back in a timely way. In this case, it's you all, his friends and family who are waiting for the results, as our community is. But I want you to know that our police department, and our city manager, and all of us are, as soon as we get those results, I know that our police department will move as quickly as possible to make a decision in this case. So, I want to thank you for being here and tell you that we share the concern that you have. And if I felt, and I know if the manager felt, that turning this over to anyone else would speed up the investigation, I know that we would do it. But in fact, it's the SBI that we're waiting for. And that's, that's our difficult situation. But I really appreciate you being here. All right. I'm going to ask now for a motion on this item. Councilmember Freeman.
Just a note, I'm not sure how we could go about it, but I think, recognizing that this is a very interesting situation that we continuously find us in within the Black community, I would love to know if there's a way that we could send a letter, maybe to the governor, to encourage maybe some prioritization in looking at those lab results. I mean, it's, there has to be something.
Well, I think that what our job is, is to try to get a change in the way this is funded.
Yes.
That's our job.
I agree.
Not to ask for an exception in this case, because almost every case is like this. And we have, one thing we could do, if we wanted to, is we could put it in our legislative agenda to ask for increasing funding of the, of the labs. I know that the, the League of Cities has frequently asked for that funding. We wouldn't be alone in that, and Councilmember Middleton represents us in that. That's something that we could do. So, it is a tremendous problem, and I agree, we should continue to speak out on it.
Thank you.
So, why don't we think about that for our legislative agenda? Councilmember Austin? Thank you. All right. I will now ask for a motion on item eight to authorize city manager to execute the five-year lease.
Moved.
Been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. I believe that is all the, all that, all that the business that come before this body. Just want to say to my colleagues and everyone who remains here today, staff and others, we're approaching the Thanksgiving holiday, and I just am very appreciative of this, thinking about this tonight up here, that, very, very thankful for each of you and the tremendous work that all of you all do, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, Madam Clerk, and all of my council colleagues, our staff members here today. We're very, very lucky in the city of Durham, and I'm very grateful for all of you all. So, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, to my council colleagues. Unfortunately for us, before we go off for Thanksgiving, I will see you all tomorrow afternoon at 1:00 for a very long agenda. I have to go home and get reading. So, this meeting is adjourned at 9:00.